As we always do, pledge allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Men, please start with roll call, please. Can we start with roll call, please?
Chair Jeanne Moore.
Here.
Vice Chair Deans, here. Secretary Lundy, here. Linda Garrett, here. Eric Snapp.
Here.
Lawrence Smith.
Here.
Joel King.
Do we have any announcements or correspondence? We will go to our order of business. First is approval of the agenda of November's meeting. Does anybody have any changes or amendments to it? Not hearing any? Move on to item number one. Will we get...
We should okay it.
You approve the... I mean, you also approve the agenda as presented.
Yeah, I second that.
Okay. Do we have a motion and a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Proved, same sign. Second is a public hearing for a special use permit for the public library.
We got the minutes.
I'm sorry?
Eighteen minutes.
Eighteen minutes, last minute.
Okay, I'm sorry. Skip over the things here. Say, do we have approval of the November meeting?
I have a correction.
Here.
Under the first vote that was called to the aides, list Joel King, he was not here. He was absent. I make a motion to approve the minutes of November fourteenth meeting per the correction.
I have a second.
I'll second it.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
There are four additions though.
I did go. One, page one.
Okay.
All right, item number two, public hearing for the Addison Township Library. Because of my relationship with the library, I have to excuse myself from the meeting. So at this time, I'm going to turn the meeting over to Vice Chair Deans, and she'll take care of things from here on out. Okay? Thank you. I want to thank everybody for coming. Have a good evening.
Thank you, Jeanne. Okay. So the applicant is the Addison Township Public Library. The property address is nine hundred Lakeville Road, parcel IV, zero five point two seven point one five one point zero one five. The zoning is suburban farms. The parcel is located on the north side of Lakeville Road and immediately east of Maple Cove Drive. The applicant seeks a special use permit from the township of Addison to construct a public library. The code of ordinances, appendix A, zoning article seven, section seven A, point oh four, uses permitted after special approval. Seven A, oh four, point one oh, public library. A, the lot shall be located adjacent to a paved public road with direct and lawful access to that paved public road. The site shall be shielded in accordance with section four, point twenty six. Parking shall be provided as required under article twenty six. Any and all lighting shall be shielded away from public right-of-way and adjacent lot lines. At this time, I'd like to open the public hearing and announce, we have had letters even just now, that people that can't attend the meeting, and they, all four, object, and the names are Mark Schistner, legal counsel for Deli Houston, Kimberly Klein, Margaret Leiba, and Julia Seville. All four of those were objections. This is a public hearing where we, as a board, listen to you. At the close of public hearing, I'll ask the planner to address the appropriate concerns. Applicants, when you come up to the podium, you will present the main points of your objection or in favor, and speak your name and what your address is. And after we have gone, everybody has talked at least once, and if you have something else to say, at that time, you can add a couple points. And then after everybody has spoken, then I will close the hearing. And then the township planner engineer will provide comment and ask questions. Okay, so at, what is the time?
Six oh five.
At six oh five, I will open the public forum. Anybody wanting to speak? Did you want to hit up and say your name?
My name is Margot Leiba, and I live at eight 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 Lakeville Road, right next to the property that is supposedly the library. I object because it's, I'm going to be sandwiched in between the fishing entrance to Lakeville Lake and then the library and the surrounding area where I live now. It's very quiet. It's very, well, suburban farm. It's supposedly supposed to be more residential. And the township, I hope they don't sneak it in because you guys have a lot of power, and we're just the ones that pay the taxes. So I really hope it does not happen because you're separating all your municipal buildings like Oxford does. And Oxford, you go here and there instead of having the unit. You have property near this facility that you could use for the library. You have the property that Mr. Shenden donated to your company, I mean, to your group, and what's happened with that? You know, that was free of charge. You paid probably a bundle for the land you have now. So I really object for the quietness, the atmosphere that we have right now, and that's it. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Deli Houston, seven eighty-one Windy Fields Court. I'm on the other side of the property. First, I'd like to say I'm glad to see everybody's back. I was here last month and couldn't have a meeting, so glad everyone's healthy and back. My letter from my attorney kind of said most of everything I needed to say. I do want to reiterate one point. Per Michigan law, you need to take into consideration the impact of a special use variance from the adjacent property owners. And in this case, the two of us are both here, we're both objecting to this. It's going to irreparably change that area. We will have a commercial structure that I can see from my front door. I'll have a dumpster enclosure I can see from my front door. I didn't build this house, and it was a lot of money, and it's worth a lot of money, and it will impact it, having a commercial building next door. I'm going to lose hundreds of thousands of dollars on the value of this house. So you need to take that into consideration. The other point I want to bring up, which my lawyer mentioned about the increased traffic, but what he didn't mention because he doesn't know the area, taking a left on Maple Cove right now on Lakeville Road, you take your life in your hands. It's a very dangerous corner. And this driveway is going to even be closer to the curb in the road. And the people that will be going to the library, young drivers mostly, won't have the experience to know when they should pull out, when they shouldn't. You're going to have accidents there. So then the move will be, let's put a light there. So we'll be turning this into downtown here with commercial building and a light. The library where it's at right now is a good location. It's with the rest of the township offices. This money would be much better spent buying that strip mall. They could have their own building. That's up to them, obviously, but this is just an improper place to put this. I didn't build this house twenty-six years ago thinking I could ever have a commercial property next door with zoned suburban farming. So I vehemently object to this. I hope the board sees the right thing to do here, but I am going to exhaust all possible options to stop this from happening.
My name is Dan Klein. I live at nine five five Maple Cove, and I'm the third piece of property that surrounds where the public library is going to go. To add on to what you were just saying, I am concerned that that intersection already is, while relatively dangerous for people coming in and out, I have a row of trees that line my property from Lakeville Road. I'm concerned if we end up with accidents and people trying to miss cars, that they're going to end up in my property with basically near zero recourse if they damage my trees there that are older than I am. So I would prefer, like he's saying, to not have that library built there. I think the township property or the property where it's located now, I think the library should do everything in their power to work with their landlord, who, as I understand it, is willing and able to have them there, willing to improve the building for them. I think that's the best plan. It keeps the township buildings in a cohesive area rather than spreading it out. I also worry that if the library becomes underfunded over the years, that we could end up with another vacant building in Addison Township, which we're going to have a vacant commercial structure once they move, if this does move forward. So Kingswood Plaza already has only one tenant in it. This is going to lose another tenant and have more vacancy. I think this is the wrong thing to do by building it there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, nine six nine Maple Cove Drive, and we are the best breakfast there. First of all, I want to say I vehemently love the library. I think the library is a needed and valued part of our community, but I'm not a hundred percent sure that across the street from Maple Cove Drive is the perfect spot for the library. And honestly, when you think of me as the business, it would offer me more exposure, but I just, I don't think that is the greatest spot for the library. I would like to see the library, you know, where it is, expanded, revitalized, or even maybe on commercial property on Rochester Road. But I just, I do not think across the street from us is the best spot for it. And I hope that they take that into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Julie Seville, and I live at nine four five Maple Cove, next to business, across from Dan and his family. And I don't agree with this location either. I, my primary thing is the traffic, and I consider that curve to be a blind curve, a blind, blind curve, because I typically leave Maple Cove through that exit closest to the boat launch. And when I pull out in the morning, by the time I get to Louis or Lakeville Station, someone's on my tail. They've come around and they're on my tail. And, you know, the bummer is usually that little bit of road rage, because I'm doing twenty-five at that point, because that's what the speed limit is, follows me down Rochester Road. They're just, all of them fit to be tied because they were behind me and thought I was going too slow. When I come home and I turn on Maple Cove the same way, I have to look, and obviously, but when it's clear, it's better at night because I can see headlights. But three out of the five times when I make that left-hand turn, halfway through my turn, I have to accelerate because someone's coming around that corner so fast that wasn't there when I started and could hit my backside. That's my biggest concern, and my concern is, okay, the road commission apparently has said it's fine, but when it is, the traffic increases, and in the middle of all this, what is currently a difficult spot, you're going to put a driveway, it just doesn't make sense to me. It seems like a dangerous thing. I too love the library. I've run to the library for years, and nobody's mad at the library. It just doesn't seem like the right spot. My other concern is the lighting. You say, you opened with, that it's not going to be projected out, but it does affect the dark sky we have at night. So feels like, feels like a really unusual idea to do it, you know? It's just not a good spot. So there's my concerns, and thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else?
I'm Mark Smith, nine six nine Maple Cove Drive, key corner across Lakeville Road from the parcel in question. I am not in objection to the library being built there. I do not view this as a commercial development. It is a civic and community benefit in my mind. Notwithstanding, there may be better places in the township to locate it, but if this is the chosen spot and permitted, I don't have any objection to that. I frankly think that half of the traffic from the west side of the township that is traveling to the current location is driving by us anyway. Lakeville Road being the only paved thoroughfare between the west side of the township and the east side at this point. I don't know that it would significantly increase traffic, but that is all anecdotal in my mind. I also think that if it were to be located there, it's fair to ask that the speed limit be moved to twenty-five miles an hour. And it's only twenty-five miles an hour already, two thousand feet down the road. That's not a big change to move it back, in my mind. Similar to Julie's concern about lighting, I would like to see the lighting shut off an hour after the library closes, whatever is safe for staff, and then have the light turned off and operate only by motion sensors. That would greatly decrease any light pollution that there might be from that, if that's a possibility. So I, again, I would not be in objection to this, but if there are better places and it could be investigated, I think that's also wise to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Somebody else? Anyone? I want to first go. Okay. I understand that the property has already been purchased, which is kind of anticipating that you get the roast before you get to eat it. It's not a good idea, you know? You can propose it to the public. If you don't buy something and say, well, in our background, we're going to change everything so that we do get that property for the library. And that would be rather sneaky, and that could change the voting issues when the time comes and people want to be, you know, re-elected to their post. Thank you. Is that it? Well, there's no more. What is the time?
Six seventeen.
Okay, at six seventeen, we will propose a hearing. And now the township planner engineer, Mr. Spry.
Spring.
Spring.
Thank you. Well, I'm not, not an engineer. I can't take credit for that.
Well, that's just what they will give me, planner.
I'm happy to be your planner.
I'll just cross that out, and thank you.
So what I, what I have within your board packet this evening is a letter that was dated October eighteenth, twenty twenty-three, with regards to consideration of the special land use. And just to give you an idea of how we look at this through the lens of the planner, is we look at the application, we look at the site plan from the applicant, and then we look at the standards that you have set forth within your ordinance for special land use approval. And our letter goes through each one of those standards, and then we provide what our finding is, whether it's in compliance, partially in compliance, or not in compliance, and then we make a recommendation to you as the board. But the good thing is, is, and what I was speaking with Pauline about earlier today, is for these to be approved, it's appropriate for the planning commission to determine their findings of fact. So while my letter provides a recommendation, one way or another, it is still incumbent upon you to note your findings of fact. With that, I'm happy to walk through my letter and what we have found with this, and specifically as it relates to some of the concerns that were brought up this evening around lighting. So being that it is a special land use, you do have to find that they have compliance with the ten items within your ordinance for approval, and it talks about things such as nuisances, noise, lighting, public safety, welfare. Does it benefit the public? And so it would be appropriate if this body were to find that the special land use wasn't compliant with your ordinance, that you could add additional conditions, such as requiring lights to be turned off at nine p.m. or six p.m. or, or at a certain period of time. It would also be appropriate for this body to determine, even though there will be a site plan review separate from the special land use, if it is needed, that there be additional screening as a result of, you know, wanting to make sure that neighbors' properties are secured or shielded in a more appropriate fashion, then you would also have the ability to add that condition. All in all, we did find, in our instance, that we felt that based on the applicant that was, the application that was provided, the site plan that was provided, the hours of operations and the details, that we felt that the conditional use could be approved if this body found that that was appropriate. And that would be conditioned upon site plan approval. So by granting a special land use, that does not automatically approve the site plan. The site plan still has to be reviewed, and the site plan still has some items that need to be addressed. But you could, with that, in our mind, approve the special land use. The other motion that you could make would be a denial of the special land use if you find as a body that the ten criteria or conditions of approval that are noted in our letter are not met. And you would, and we want to understand specifically why one of those conditions may not be met. But with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you do have. As I stated, our letter, after review, did recommend that the special land use could be approved. We did not offer any conditions of approval. But again, just spoke about two that possibly could be conditions of approval, being that lighting be shut off at a certain period of time or other items, you know, are put in place to ensure protection of properties next year. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
I think my biggest question, when I first heard about this location, was definitely the traffic.
Sure.
I've lived in this area forever, and I know that that curve is definitely a concern. With the speed that people go, we have the speed limit that it currently is right now and everything, and it did seem like there may have been some question from the road commission about dampnesses and whether there's, you know, the driver would be adequate in order to have people pull into that. Were other people coming around a blind corner, you may have to worry about some car being there.
Sure. And I think that's, I think that's something, especially from the site plan perspective, that if there are specific questions from this board for the road commission to answer or that you would need from them, I think it would be appropriate through the site plan process to get additional details from the road commission.
Anybody else? Lawrence?
Of the ten items that you mentioned in your report, sir?
Yes.
Are, is there any particular one or more than one that you feel the library would not conform to?
I believe so. There was a couple of questions that I, that I think are legitimate. And again, when we're talking about not creating a nuisance or, you know, protecting health, safety, welfare, light shed, I think it is appropriate to ask if the lighting can be addressed as a stipulation. The other item that was brought to my attention prior to the meeting is in a letter that they sent dated December fourth, talks about, from the library itself, talks about some possible outdoor programming. I would think that we would want to understand what that outdoor programming might be and how intense it might be. Is it just outdoor exercise classes? Is it science classes? Is it nature walks? What is, what is the purpose of that, that outdoor program? I'm sorry, that letter is from September sixth. But I don't know, I don't know if, in my mind as the planner, that that would be enough of a sticking point to not consider approved. But again, you know, I wanted to go back to your planning commission bylaws, talking about public hearings. It's section G, subsection, or sub number eight, that after the public hearing is conducted, that the planning commission begins deliberation and tables until the next meeting for continued deliberation or decision. So any questions that we have or any concerns that you might have that we think maybe could be eliminated or alleviated? I think now is the time for us to get that on the table because we'll have to come back for this at the next month's meeting to make your final decision.
For that particular item from some of the drawings you've seen or the information that's available, is there some of the area of this quarter footage would allow outdoor activity other than in the parking lot?
You know, the whole site is roughly two point seven acres. I'm not quite sure what type of outdoor activity that they would be doing, but when you look at the overhead from their site plan, I believe, I'm trying to say what page it is, page C six is, shows an overhead. The only area that you really, it looks like, appears to me, that would be eligible for outdoor activity would be on the east side of the property, as you're getting closer to the dirt road there on the edge of the property. I'm not sure where else they would be able to hold outdoor programming. And without knowing what the nature of the outdoor programming could be, I think that's just something we want to understand more about.
Need just be explained.
Yeah.
Do they have any questions for the applicants?
Okay, so now we come to the part that you already mentioned. You received a letter from the library requesting to consider the special use decision tonight, but our bylaws, which you just mentioned, said that we will not be able to make the decision, but a discussion.
Correct, and within those bylaws, there are, there are times when bylaws provide an opportunity to grant a waiver, and in the case of the township, the zoning board of appeals actually has that language in their bylaws. The planning commission does not. This is, so this is adopted policy of the township for the operation of the planning commission. So in order to waive that, we would actually have to amend the bylaws, and that's not something that we can do tonight. If that's something the planning commission wants...
There may be just to have to do this yet.
Correct. So if the planning commission wants to do that, we're happy to look at that, but we just, we're hamstrung tonight.
Okay, so then that will have to wait until the January ninth, two thousand twenty-four to address this issue.
Correct.
Okay. So that finishes the library section, and we're on to the ordinance review.
So we would actually need a motion to table.
Oh, that's right, I forgot.
I'll make a motion to be tabled.
Sorry.
My second motion is...
It's good discussion.
In this discussion that we have now.
Yeah, now that you have the motion on the table, you can have it.
Yeah, now that you have the motion on the table, you can have discussion.
Can we have discussion with the applicant to ask any questions?
Yes.
Hello, Jamie Moser Elliott, the applicant.
I, I was going through what you had listed here for your programming list as an example for two thousand twenty-four, and it looks like everything's pretty much indoors.
Yes, yes, that is correct. The only one that, and I was going through markings because I heard the question, what might be outdoors? The only one that's listed would be called Jump in the Trunk. It's a parking lot sale, so it's something that happens in the parking lot. We do it in the current location. It occurs on Saturday. I believe, if I recall correctly, it went from ten to about three, ten A M. to three.
If, if you were to have that at the new library, would the sale portion of it be on the, say, grass? And then the parking lot be used for parking? Would be different?
Um, it's hard to say. It was, it was designed about selling stuff out of trunks and how to keep it in, in the parking lot. It wasn't, we, it was never intended to be like a large, like a free market sale.
Right.
It would bring stuff that fits in the parking space.
So would you still continue to have that in the current location? Where would people park if you did that?
Um, we were, I, I guess we would have to address that when we get, that's, that's what we have on the program right now. Until we can actually use a space, it's hard to tell how, how we actually utilize it.
I'm just curious.
Yeah.
What other kind of outdoor uses would you?
The only other one that we've had that was other than Jump in the Trunk was in two thousand twenty-two. We had a winter seed sowing event that was in the parking lot. That took place for about four or five hours. We made fishing demo, where Fast Gro Shop came out and put out a map and let kids cast a line with a, you know, non-hook pick when we were at the end.
That was done in the parking lot?
That was done behind the current facility right now. That was not in the parking lot. So it was in a, it was in a small grassy area, taking up probably about half the space that we're in right now.
Okay. And this letter mentions larger outdoor space for science, nature, recreational programs. Is there any concepts that you were thinking of using it for?
Perhaps. It would bring the opportunity, you break somebody out to explain more about nature, maybe more about planting, wildlife, stuff like that, things for kids. It's, it's hard to say until, until you really get, somebody to sign up to come out and do that, either through funding or volunteer.
How big of groups do you think you might have?
Oh, we've had, um, I'm just trying to reference the stats here. So food back, I mean, we, it really depends on what we, what we have. Most, most of our big events go indoors. I do remember, because I attended it myself, the fishing demo. Like I said, maybe there was ten, fifteen kids, but we were in a space that was half the size of this room. They were sitting down in a chair with the instructor demonstrate, and, you know, so we can keep it, you know, relatively small area, you know, not, nothing much larger than a playground size.
It's, it's a lot of two and a half acres to cut grass out there. I was just wondering if you're planning on developing it any further than keeping all the uses inside primarily?
Yeah, no, it is a good question. So when we respect the size of the library, we actually use a formula that was created by a library institution, you know, American Library Association, and that gives you a square footage that you should plan for a library based on the population of the area. And that came out to four thousand eight hundred square feet of usable space. So we're under that. We have a five thousand square foot building, but we have a multipurpose room. We have bathrooms, we have staff break room, circulation desk takes up. So it's not actually five thousand square feet of usable space, so to speak.
Would you be leasing that space out at any point or renting it out?
No, there are no plans on that. If, perhaps you have the interior layout in that site plan packet. You can see we do have plans for the one side, being the children and teens and the tweens and adults on the other side, with the multi, you know, multipurpose room takes up some space, so if you like, not a room for the size, but.
So you're not going to have birthday parties or?
No, no, no.
Events there?
Nope. That, stuff like that, we talked about in the past, but based on what I believe, we don't do anything like that.
Okay. I know it might be more site plan, but I noticed on the site plan, I didn't see any exterior lighting on the building, just the parking lot lights.
Yeah, there might be some exterior lighting underneath the overhang for the entrance, similar to what we have now in the plaza. That would be, maybe you have one on after hours for security light purposes.
Is that front and rear sides?
Just front.
Just front?
Just front, facing them, nothing in the back.
Nothing in the back?
Yep. If, if you would like, I did print off, because some of the concerns that we were made aware of, we did try to address already in the site plan. I printed off, I'm sorry, the smaller.
I haven't seen the new site plan yet. I just have the old one, so.
Yeah.
I noticed too that, well, I actually wondered, so there won't be any ingress egress off of Maple Cove?
Not anymore.
Or dirt roads? Everything goes off of Lakeville?
Sorry, sorry. There's, there's three sheets there, if I can, if I can pass them out here. The, there's only one point of ingress and egress one approach, and that's off of Lakeville Road. This also shows additional tree screening along the property line. And then the third sheet is the photometric plan. Printed off nicely in color. If you take a look at it, all the blue is here, zero, that's measure of candlelight. So you can see as, the back of the building is already at zero. All of the lighting, it really stays in front of the building. We did the best we can to keep everything, everything within our area, not intrusive to the neighbors. We're keeping as much of the natural vegetation that we can around the property lines, and then adding more, as you can see on sheet L one, which is the very first page, you can see the additional ponds that will be planted along the, along the property line.
But there wouldn't be a lot of outdoor for, you know, I've, I've been a teacher all my life, and kids can get noisy, and I would imagine if I were a neighbor, and I'd be concerned about, you know, constant noise.
Well, and that's a good point. So on the constant noise, in two thousand twenty-three, we have one event that goes outdoors.
So it's not going to be constant?
No, it's not, it's not schoolhouse playground.
Yes, it's a good way to say it.
But the best, the best, the most that we've had in a year was in twenty-two, two thousand twenty-two. We, three that were outdoors.
Okay, so the only time that you're open within the wintertime where people will see headlights is going to be on Tuesday and Thursday evenings? Other than that, everything closes early?
That is correct, yes. Monday in spring and summer, and you'll see we go up to eight.
Only on Tuesday and Thursday?
Tues, Tuesday and Thursday, it's always till eight, yeah.
Other than, so what I'm thinking is, in the wintertime, on Tuesdays and Thursdays, you're going to be open till eight. All the other days, when you're open in the evening, it's not going to affect.
Parking lot lights.
Nobody's going to see any headlights, and nobody's going to see any exterior lighting.
We've already looked into seven day, or at least I personally looked into, keeping respects to, to what they asked for. I can understand that. Looked into a seven day program, we're controlling for the parking lot lights. So on the days, a good example would be, I believe in that Monday, we're only a little bit eight P M. in the spring and summer, so it lights out a little bit more. But you can almost look at Monday, Wednesday, Friday, and Saturday, and Sunday, you would not see any parking lot lights Tuesday, Tuesday and Thursday.
Would be the only evening lights in the winter?
Yeah.
And how late, how long are those lights on after you're closed?
Usually an hour after.
An hour?
Yeah.
And they're just on the site plan, am I, were there just two whole lights in the front? So how many whole lights were there?
Just two, yeah.
Just two, and how tall are those?
I think they're twenty.
Twenty feet, and they're shielded down?
Correct.
And the lumens are, so if you were one of the residents there and you were outside, would you be able to see those parking lot lights in those two evenings from those residents?
When you're talking about seeing, seeing or the light actually being projected out of the window?
Yeah, that's, that's the difference. It's almost like seeing a neighbor in the distance. How bright is that light?
Yeah. I guess it's hard to say. I, the best I can do is reference, you know, the photometric, correct if I'm wrong, it's going to be the amount of light that you can see on the ground, something that's actually projected down to you, and, and it diffuses, it's down to zero before it gets to Lakeville Road.
I still need, if I may, to everybody's chair, I still need to do a thorough review of this. What I can say from experience, so where I'm looking at where the light poles are, the readings that they're showing on the photometrics are three, fours, maybe is one of the highest. But I'm used to seeing those numbers in like the elevens, twelves, eighteens.
Okay.
So it's not showing very bright there, absolutely correct. But like I said, I still need to do a thorough review, but with respect to your question, it doesn't appear that they're going to be extremely bright.
Yeah, so I think that's something important, that we know that the lights will be off within an hour of closing.
Yeah, that's absolutely something.
And there's just the one securing light in the front.
Yeah.
I, as far as being harmonious, I don't know, looking at the screening that's going to be offered to people. We need to talk about that with the site plan, but.
Okay.
But that would be the only other thing, is any kind of increased uses, especially outdoors? Any after-hours events planned, or any of these after-hours?
The events that we just discussed?
Any upcoming events that are after-hours?
Not right now. Uh, we're jumping the trunk.
Would you be proposing any others that are?
Nothing, that's why, that's why I provided this, just so you could kind of see. I, I know they're just titles, so it's hard to, hard to tell. I think, I know in the past, we had farm, uh, Oakland Hills Farm come up for a few hours with animals, so kids can come up and see them. I think most of that was indoors. They may have had one animal outdoors for a little bit, but it's, it's not honorable. I mean, you would see it here if we were doing stuff out, activities outdoors that were, you know, over the top. I mean, just as I was mentioning, we're probably the biggest unit that's in that plaza there. So I, that kind of shows what kind of usage we have.
I know, I'm just wondering, because I'm reading this letter that says you're going to be able to expand outdoor uses, and they're not really showing that you have any. You've got all these acres, and I'm just wondering what.
We don't have, we don't have the room to do it. So we don't know who we could have, we've had farm, like I said, we had Oakland Hills Farms come back, visit there in the past. They had little ducklings that they brought into the library. They had all the things, and rabbits, they had all the things to help educate kids, because you have to let hold these. We've had people come in and talk about reptiles, and, you know, that was all done indoors. Maybe that's outdoors, but you're, it's not even one a week, maybe one a month.
I'm just wondering if, how, how we say if you're going to be expanding this list, do we have any input going forward? Is there?
Well, I guess from the special land use point of recourse is, again, going back to the standards in our letter, each one of those standards, if approved, are, are still to be held and followed. And if there are complaints of nuisance or traffic issues arise or sound, something that would be in violation of any of those standards, then the planning commission can bring that applicant back before the planning commission, subject to a hearing to potentially revoke the special land use. So you do have repercussion there. We, I, it wouldn't be feasible, I guess, to try to cover every event that they have under the approval of the special land use. But, but like I said, you have those tools and the standards in place that if there are violations that are brought forward, then you can definitely hold them accountable for those.
Okay. So if you were to bring them back in to talk about the special land use, and they had some violations or anything like that, like what kind of?
If there's, if there are complaints made, typically how a special land use revocation works is, usually somebody is not playing by the rules of which they were authorized to operate by. A complaint is brought forward to the township. That complaint would be investigated by, by myself, by the township staff, as to what that violation would be. And then if we do indeed find it a violation, we would have them come back before you in a public hearing to, to either correct the situation, or ultimately have the planning commission vote to revoke that special land use permit, which then they would not be able to operate until which time that those violations are corrected or the uses be authorized.
I have one more question on the lighting. What about security lights? Would there be like a couple of lights on the building all night for security, like Lakeville Animal Clinic? Or just no lights?
Nothing planned at the moment.
Pardon?
Nothing planned. Nothing, no, no, no.
In the back?
Not, nothing projecting lights out. It would be a light or two to light up, maybe the two individual halves that we have. Again, similar to what the, the current location has, where it's security lighting. So if an officer passes by, you can see if somebody's in there. And then maybe one of the lights in the entrance way.
Yeah, that's what I was wondering.
Yeah. But that's not, if you were to take a look at the plans, we have that large overhang that goes over the entrance, so it'd be a light going straight down.
Okay.
It's not, you know, it's not a floodlight or anything going out.
There's nothing in the back?
Nothing in the back.
Not all of those, what about interior lighting? Do we have lights on at night?
There would be one light probably in each section. So maybe, looking at how the building's broken up, maybe you would have three sections, so maybe you'd have three lights on.
Not much more than that. I have a neighbor with a giant pole on it, and that was big, lovely, so you could see it a mile away.
Because I, I brought up the Lakeville Animal Clinic, because it's just, just kind of a muted security light. That's what I was wondering.
I heard mentioned all access to egresses to Lakeville Road. Is the parking area and around the building, et cetera, accessible to sanitation trucks and delivery vehicles?
Yes.
They won't have to back out onto the road?
That is correct.
Okay, I'll go next. Looking at it, representing the residents in the township, let's assume that this goes ahead and you get your permit. Has the library board looked at sustaining the business, so to speak? You have a, a business model. Can you sustain, sustain the business with the millage that you're getting? Like right now, you're getting three quarter of a mill.
Mm-hmm.
If you bounce that against the new building, now you're going to be a landowner. Have you conducted a study as to the, how, how it's going to run?
Yeah, no, it's a good, it's a good question. I can talk to that, because we've done that. So currently, right now, the library pays for that entire plaza to plow. So this square footage, if you were to look at it from that standpoint of a parking lot, is, well, on the old, old lot, when we're looking at feasibility and cost over here, it was equal to, this looks like it might be a little bit less, but we can say it's equal, right? Over, over here, we had a much larger park, that way, we had a much larger parking lot. And I did that study, square footage, so snow plowing from, from that standpoint would be the same. We might have a little bit more when it comes to mowing the lawn. We understand that, right? We got some, got some to do here, and we got to do out exterior. But what I do know is we won't be paying a monthly rent fee.
Well, there's not going to be an outstanding loan?
No.
Okay. Taxes?
Same.
That's true.
Same amount of fees, same collection.
So on the record, you're saying that you can live with three quarters of a mill, like you do right now?
Yes.
But we won't fully pay it?
I, we can provide, I mean, the financial stuff is, is open to the public.
No, the reason I ask that is, you know, one of the things that I like to consider is, even if, if it went ahead and we approved this, is it a viable operation?
Yes.
Or is it doomed to, in two, three years, be an empty building that the township is going to have to soon pay for? So I, that's why I bring this up.
I suspect, I, I suspected to be less, because we're not going to have, they pay sixteen.
It's going to be less?
Yes. We pay sixteen hundred dollars a month just in rent in our current space.
That is cheap.
It is, it is cheap, but we won't have to pay that. But we won't have to pay that. It's cheap.
Right.
That's, that's a safe.
Right.
And we're probably going to be in a building that's a little bit more well insulated. We pay for all the repairs over there. We pay for the maintenance of the, the entire complex, that parking lot, and anything else on the building. So that's going to stay the same.
So you're, you're currently paying for all of that stuff?
Yeah, yeah. That's why our rent's so cheap.
When, okay, let me switch subjects to that. Well, the, the outside activities, I think it was asked before. One of the reasons you give why you want to relocate is you want to increase the outside activities. And before you made the statement that, well, we only had one. So which is?
Yeah, if we, we could get another one or two, bring in educational things that we can do in a safe manner, because we just don't have the space. Maybe somebody can come out and talk about wildlife. because we just don't have the states. Maybe somebody can come out and talk about wildlife. Somebody could come out and talk about nature. There's a lot of creativity that goes on with the library, a lot of opportunities to learn. And that's just going to help enable that potential. We don't have a lineup here yet, but it would be there.
Just for the record, how much bigger is the new building compared to your existing facility?
We have three thousand square feet, maybe five.
Right now?
We have three thousand square feet right now.
Right now, and you're going to five thousand?
Five thousand.
Okay.
Can I ask one more question?
Sure.
What is the use going to be in that courtyard in the back?
That whole cove in between the two sections, that's potentially where you would have some of those outdoor activities. Or, you know, maybe it would be seating for somebody to go out and read a book if they wanted. We don't, just from a budgetary standpoint, we don't plan to pay for doing anything in that area at the initial construction phase.
So it's not going to be paid? It's not going to be on surface payers?
Potentially in the future, but right now, there's no plan.
I'm wondering. Thank you.
Anybody else have any more questions? We have a motion on the?
Yeah, so the motion may be of importance to table it to the next meeting.
So you want to vote on it?
Yes.
Okay.
All members. Over here. Okay, I vice president to table this to next month is the motion. I vote yes. Secretary Lundey?
Hi.
Linda Garrett?
Is she the secretary?
Yeah, she should be.
Yeah, she's the secretary.
I thought secretary Lundey.
No, 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 she should be doing the whole.
Oh, okay.
Okay. Linda Garrett?
Yes.
Eric Snash?
Yes.
Vice Chair Beans?
Yes.
Lauren Smith?
Yes.
Secretary Lundey?
Yes. Sorry.
You're used to being the secretary.
Yes. Please, here is, kind of an old hand, sorry.
Okay, and then the next meeting that will be discussing this is January ninth, twenty twenty-four. Now the ordinance review. Article twenty-four, and that will be turned over to you.
So within your packet, you have a couple of ordinance drafts that were prepared for your consideration. A couple of minor changes. Article twenty-four of your schedule of regulations. It was noted that there was a subtext that was referred to, and a few items being subtext P. Now that's been updated to properly refer to that, and that P is now added. Says that its property likes public water, sanitary sewer, and the minimum buildable area shall be determined by the planning commission to be sufficient. Applicant must obtain the Oakland County Health Department approval. So that was, that was an easy change for you.
Is that the items in red here?
Yes. That was an easy change for your consideration. The next was to article twenty-seven under the administration enforcement section. And there are a number of changes kind of through the body of the text, and, yes.
And there's another correction, another question for the bottom line?
Oh, correct, circled it. It says the minimum, so on the second page underneath the schedule of regulations, there's an asterisk that says the minimum lot area shall not include any portion within the right-of-way or public road easement or bogland is defined by the Michigan Public Act four fifty-one, nineteen ninety-four, for any lot created after the effective date of this ordinance. Definition. Also, there is a update to the lot area definition within the ordinance to, again, go back to refer to that. Under lot area, again, stating, talking about the public right-of-way, public easement, or bogland is defined by that Act four fifty-one. So that is now defined in lot area. Going into article twenty-seven under administration enforcement, again, it was, there's a few more changes here, but a lot of them were fairly minor and small that we wanted to point out to you. On the first page under twenty-seven oh four, halfway down the first paragraph, added the sentence, "Building inspector shall record all non-conforming uses existing at the effective date of this ordinance." And essentially, it's language to put in here to designate which official monitors, records, non-conformities, and how they're tracked. And so as we go forward and change things, we want to make sure that we're decreasing non-conformities, not increasing. And so this provides the administrative side of that.
Does that mean that the building inspector needs to create a list of, like, inspect every property in the township for non-conformities? How would you do that?
It's difficult, and that's really not the intention that we wanted to have, saying from day one that the building inspector would have to go out and inspect. But as non-conformities are brought forward, we want a way to make sure that we know where they are, that we keep track of them, that we understand, you know, for the period specifically, you know, if a non-conforming use were to abruptly halt or cease to exist. You know, making sure that we know that that's a non-conformity, so if the use tries to reestablish, we have, understand what our timelines are within the ordinance for that to happen. So we need a way to start to track any non-conformities. But no, we couldn't certainly expect them to immediately go out and do a complete township-wide survey to identify those non-conformities.
This change of, change of use, did I move on too far?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
The other items that are within this section twenty-seven, or article twenty-seven, again, are just pretty minor. Adding in language for zoning compliance permits as recommended by the planner, or submit a zoning compliance permit for review by the planner. Another section in twenty-seven oh five, zoning compliance permits recommendation from a planner, adds that a complete application, put the word completed, added ten business days for that. And then under fees, added inspection slash review fees. So pretty, again, pretty minor here. Where we get to the larger ordinance change is when we get to the special events, temporary uses, temporary structures. Under your current ordinance, there is a whole list of what those temporary events are, or what those temporary uses are. What we're doing, what we're looking to do is to actually define special events and carry over some of that language from the existing ordinance. For example, like language, the building official with the planner's recommendation may grant special events permits for a temporary use. A special event permit approval shall consist of one of the following. A special event that lasts no more than seven consecutive days, two consecutive weeks, or eight one-day events. That's similar to the language you have now. One of the major changes here is that these special events are currently reviewed by the zoning board of appeals. Just bring it back to an administrative review process under the building and planning department for those special events. Under the temporary portable buildings, we added some language here around what those temporary building structures, portable buildings are, can be utilized for. And then under definitions, we added, "Special event means the use of land for temporary activity that extends beyond what is expressly allowed by the applicable zone in terms of use and development standards." And then also, "Temporary structure means portable housing or demountable transportable building that is designed and built to be movable rather than permanently located. Demountable structures may include, but are not limited to, structures that provide shelters such as tents and marquise, platforms and supports for performers such as stages or viewing facilities, temporary seating or grandstands."
Is there a time that a temporary portable structure, like seven days, or does somebody have an intent up for a special event?
So the limit is that the event could last no more than seven consecutive days. Or, and I was going to see, we have a specific timeline in here for when the event can be set up or taken down.
It says six months.
Yes, six months for the temporary structure. Anytime beyond the six months must be approved by the planning commission. But again, that's not for, with the way that that paragraph is structured, that's really in regards to temporary living, say somebody built a house or had fire damage from a house or something, and they need to have a modular unit that they can live in, or if there's construction going on, and a lot of times they'll have the construction offices set up. That's really what this is more for, this definition, not necessarily tents and awnings or things of that nature that you might set up, like a fireworks stand or something along that line. Is that what I'm understanding you're asking?
Yes.
Okay.
So are those addressed in there?
I think that would be something that we would want to look at further, is putting that time limit in. And that's the kind of comments we're hoping to get from you this evening, because obviously, we're not going to planning, a public hearing on these yet. We wanted to bring it to your attention, get your thoughts and feedback, and then determine if you wanted to bring these through to public hearing at an upcoming meeting, or did you want to wait for more ordinance updates?
Oh, good, happy sight. If you want to do these three or a group, or a couple more to these.
If you were to ask me, I'd say we do more. It's always costs less to publish them and alter that public hearing and then codify them.
A larger group then.
I'll leave has input though.
I would just like to ask a question. So you guys are thinking about a timeframe for the special events if they're having a temporary structure? Could maybe you guys discuss what you might think a decent timeframe is? Because you're asking about how long before and how long after. So I would like to hear that.
I think if we're looking at like fireworks tents, I mean, you know, they usually have those up for a couple of weeks, and I think they should be up there.
Well, under the new special event language here, that would apply, in my mind. They would have to apply for this. And so they would have seven days at a location, or, you know, they would, two consecutive weeks, weekends, or eight one-day events. So that's, the question then is, would they have to set up the tent the same day that they start sales? Is it appropriate that they set up the tent a day before they start sales, two days before they start sales? Conversely, the day that they stop sales, does the tent have to be down within twenty-four hours, thirty-six hours, forty-eight hours? I think that would be an appropriate discussion to have, how we're willing to put that in order.
I know a lot of times they put them up and then they set up, and usually, you know, a company will come back and take them down within a week after their event. So erecting and taking down tents, what period of time would we? Is it allowing them, or when is it required that they get approval?
Because I'm hearing this as the special events, but the question you brought up is not addressed. We're not saying how long before the permit or how long after, or does the permit include it? So I, I just want clear direction as far as being put on the PC. Do you want to give a little bit of leeway, or the permit is going to be the permit?
Would it make sense for it to be more on an event-by-event purpose if we're being opposed for the special events?
So, yeah, so that would be the intent right now, the way it's worded, is that any special event, and you, you know, when you look at the current section, four point one six, all of these types of events would still fit into this space. And so really what it's doing is taking the approval and hearing away from the zoning board of appeals and bringing it to the building special, to the plan, where we'll be able to look at this. So we've got these A through F under the new, or I guess A through G. But it, you know, it states here, "Special events are discretionary use. The township will review the location, size, intensity, and site layout. Will not be objectionable to nearby dwellings by reason of noise." And another, other items that we put in here that are, essentially, we would, how do I want to say it? It would be a lot easier from the township's perspective doing this through the administrative review process, but it will be very discretionary. So if somebody wanted to have an event, say a church wanted to have an outdoor carnival for a day, or somebody wanted to have a small community concert at the library, or something along that line, they would have to come to the township, they would have to apply for the permit, they'd have to provide all the required information.
So at what point in time are they required to get a permit or to get that approval?
Prior to the event, for sure.
I know, well, I guess I'm not clear on, so like Kingsbury has an event. It's only two days. This is talking about an event, you know, the special event definition, to me, is not clear. If it's one-day fireworks at Edison Oaks, or at what point is a special event requirement required?
For me, it's anytime that they're doing a use that's outside of the use, uses permitted in that district by right or by special land use.
All right, but when I read this, it was saying, it was saying things like, you know, eight consecutive days or?
That's the time limit. So for any individual event, that's the time limit for how long the event can occur.
I get it wrong. Okay, thank you.
When you read the definition of the special event, it kind of clarifies what it is.
Which is the definition that you have?
On your next page.
The one that says current, that's what we have now.
You want me to read what's proposed?
Current, yes, that's under the proposed.
Got it. Do you want me to read it to everyone? Does everyone want to hear it?
Sure.
Special event means the use of land for temporary activity that extends beyond what is expressly allowed by the applicable zone in terms of use and development standards. So structure temporary means a portable building or demountable transportable building that is designed and built to be movable rather than permanently located. Demountable structures, that's a weird word. May include, but are not limited to, structures that provide shelter, tents, or marquise, platforms, and supports for performers, stages, or viewing facilities, temporary seating or grandstands. That's what I missed. Thank you.
You're welcome.
That sounds good.
So I still think the, that the question is, do you want to have any language in here that gives a reasonable window for setup time and terror of special events?
Like forty-eight hours?
I don't think that's reasonable.
It depends on the event.
It depends. If you have a company that's going to be delivering it, they might have a week before they can deliver it and a week after to pick it up.
Like for the horse show in up in Benamora, you're bringing in stalls two weeks before. I would say it'd have to be very flexible.
But you don't want it to sit there for six months because nobody picked it up.
True, yes.
So two weeks before, two weeks after, if there's complaints, will we address it?
Two weeks, ten days, something like, is that what you're looking for?
I think we can, I think we can maybe with staff have a discussion and see what, because again, it might be a bit specific. So I think that might be something that might be a condition of the approval, as opposed to just actual language in the ordinance. As a condition of approval, we might be able to put the terms of when it can go in, when it can come out, and how that's handled.
To create a uniformity with, or, you know, would it make sense to have like worst-case scenario, two weeks or whatever, and then within that timeframe?
Well, I think partly, if you look, you can also look at, we can ask for a performance guarantee. So under the temporary portable buildings or structures, very last sentence, it does state that a performance guarantee shall be required or established in case the township in the worst-case scenario has to remedy the situation. I think we can look at that for the temporary events, or special events as well. I think we can look at that for the temporary events, or special events as well.
Like a bond?
That's all I have on these. With your blessing, would you, you'd just like to know at the next step, you, if you want, I think you already alluded to bringing a larger package of amendments to do with one shot.
Yeah, rather than just these three, then the next two, I think we should combine.
So you can maybe modify anything that we said in here and then bring it back to us so we all work on some more?
We're supposed to decide if we want a few more before we have a public hearing. Everybody, another three or-
Are we looking for a number? How many?
Do we, is this just a matter of what the recommendations from our planners is as far as the additional changes?
I know we do have some additional ordinance amendments that we're looking at as well, so we, we will have more. We can just, when you get to a space where you feel like you're ready, we can, we can do that. I know we have more to work on.
Why don't we leave it at multiple? Depending on the scope? Let the scope drive the number?
Yeah, we, I mean, if we have major events-
Yeah.
-you know, that are, that are, you know, have the potential to be contentious or take a lot of time to deliberate, and obviously we'll keep those out. What we're trying to do is package the easiest ones for you, so, so you can do it in one shot.
The board made a recommendation with the planning commission, look at some ordinances so maybe after we complete that. We have a huge list that the board decided to look at. So here's three from that list. Out of how many? I don't have a number on the top of my head, but it's a lot. So do you want to move these forward then? Would that be easier for the clerk's office?
I, I think the special events and listing needs to be tweaked a little bit and brought back, and that I think we will have time to do, probably for next month. It sounds like the other two are ready and set to go, and possibly not guaranteeing that we're going to have a couple more next month. We'll have to just wait and see.
Make a decision at that point.
Okay.
Okay, well, should we table this, or the motion to, oh, to get them next month? How do we do that?
I don't think we, I don't think we need a formal action. I think we've got our direction.
Okay, so we'll just look at this at the next meeting.
Okay, sounds good to me.
Public forum. This is where we listen to anything else anybody has to say.
Mark Smith, nine six nine, Maple Cove Drive. Having heard the planners' comments about the special use zoning permit, it seems that you folks may be able to dictate that there be no more than two or three or four outdoor events at the library site as a conditional approval for the special use permit. That would have to be the planner. If that is a concern of the board, you may have that authority.
Thank you. Good point. Anybody else? Okay. Commissioners report? No topics report, nobody has one? Well then, we're at the last part here. Has anybody moved to adjourn?
Tom make a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Can we second it?
Look.
Yes, now sector back.
Please. All in favor say aye. No? Okay.